To a separate US Cellular entity entitled USCC Wireless Holdings LLC. For the purpose of the potential sale of assets to end the city and transfer of the lease agreement to T-Mobile. Mike, welcome.
Thank you. So in your package you have essentially a one-page letter and had fifteen-page lease agreement with US Cellular. And two brief amendments to that lease agreement. Uh, US Cellular has had divided itself into two companies. It placed its cell provider assets into the company that they're asking us to. Vote on and transfer um, uh, the lease agreement to that new entity. They have since sold that entity as of August first to T-Mobile. So they're in the process of converting all US Cellular customers to T-Mobile customers. Uh, US Cellular will continue as an operation mostly with their tower assets and other cellular assets not related to cellphone service itself. So more or less, the cellphone service has been sold to T-Mobile. So our lease agreement does, and not being an attorney, our lease agreement does have a clause that allows um, uh, the. Uh, the lease, the city of Seward, uh, to approve, uh, to.
Transfer.
The, uh, transfer of this. And this is mostly if, if, for instance, US Cellular wanted to sell to, um, Viaro or some other, um, cellphone company entirely. That they could sell all their assets and this gives the city a voice in that process. Um, so having said that, um, we're asking for the council to, um, weigh in and approve this, uh, transfer of this lease agreement to this new entity.
Thanks, Mike. Do any questions or comments from the council? Kelly, do you want to add?
I don't see anything to add.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to?
Well, for the, for the lease price, it was set in two thousand thirteen, right? According to this.
I, I don't know the last time it was updated. That, that could be.
Is that something that we would want to consider on re-finding out what that actually might be?
There is a separate, um, change to the lease itself. This is just a transfer to T-Mobile since they're taking the assets. They have a separate lease agreement because they have to move all their stuff to renegotiate any of the terms.
So this just gives them under the current lease location on the old water tower and we'll have another one come through on the new one.
Yes, yes. Cause all of this will, right, Mike? This one will disappear and then all the new terms will be under the new lease on the new water tower. Cause they're located in the downtown tower.
So previously we approved AT&T. There's two cellphone companies that are on our, uh, smaller tower, AT&T and US Cellular. They will be transferring their equipment, new equipment to the new tower and will be dismantling, demolishing the old tower. AT&T is selected to, uh, adjust lease agreement. At, um, US Cellular, because of the change in location even by a hundred feet, has decided to take the option of. With the new tower having a brand-new lease agreement. That is in process and we're not there yet. Uh, we have a third US, uh, cellphone provider, Verizon on the north tower. We have more space again on north tower. So, um, the, uh, new lease agreement, well, with this lease agreement, there is an escalation of the, of the monthly fee. That's built into the lease. I think it's in one of the amendments. Uh, so we're not, I believe we're not operating on the twenty thirteen.
I could look with this one up for you. Um, but this one did have a fifteen percent increase over each term. So the initial term, so every five years that we did this one, there's a fifteen percent increase to that base rent.
And i- if I may also preface, I've been working with these cellphone providers, I've been informed, maybe it's self-serving. That the lease agreement that we have, the cost is above market value. And of course, towers are becoming a big business. Of course, we had a tower by T-Mobile that was, um, rejected. Uh, but that is an alternative, um, to providing cellphone service on existing city infrastructure. And so they weigh, you know, how much does that cost? So there's a, uh. Perhaps unlikely that we're going to get a substantial cost escalation in the lease.
Well, it's less than one year of my cellphone bill, so. Anyway, all right, I'm good with that then.
So we had a motion in a second? Did we do it yet?
No.
I lost track.
You're ready for a motion to approve?
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Say no, do you wish to hear your votes? Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Cowell, Kayla Tanyas, Colton Miller, four to six here.
Thank you. Item four, consideration of a memorandum of understanding of Black Hills Energy for de- for decommission of the LNG site located at the Seward rail campus. Greg.
Yes, um, Black Hills decommissioned their LNG site, their liquid natural gas site at the rail campus. Um, just to the south of WRC, WCR, sorry. Um, and they asked us what state they'd like it to be left in. In my communications with Jonathan and my team, since we already have a rock lot there that has access that you can get in with a fence. Just in case we had somebody develop, unless they're developing that lot, uh, we know when we saw the secondary, um, building of Pet Source, we needed throwdown areas. If you're building a relatively small one, you only need a huge throwdown area, but you need somewhere to put something securely. We can utilize this as a throwdown area for development on other rail campus lots. We still have the lots to the south of this exact location and we have the lot, two lots to the north of Lavander in this general area. So if we needed some throwdown area that could be secure, why not leave this? They said, hey, we'll take out our equipment and decommission and leave it that way. You can just spray it for weeds and maintain the rock. So I felt like that was a good use of it rather than then just rip up all the rock, put, sew it back to grass and then we're back to mowing it again. So, uh, this agreement will allow us to do that. Me and Kelly kind of flipped through it again this morning. Uh, but they'll get started on this like tomorrow morning if we see the purpose tonight. Cause they're in town, they just put through, uh, the main gas main for the dairy project. Uh, they're also building the town border station system down south further, uh, for our second town border station, kind of near the airport, I believe. Um, and so their crew, same crew will be in town and they'll decommission this as well.
Any questions or comments from the council?
It was my understanding that that, this, this particular site was intended to be a short-term use. Is that correct?
Yes. Once they built that town border station and this connection to the rail campus, they have absolutely no need to supplement, uh, their gas usage, uh, in the area.
Thank you.
This was faster than they intended though, wasn't it?
Um, I don't believe so. I, I feel like twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six approximately was. Me and Jonathan, I know Jonathan's not in here, he's working on something else, but we've been talking to Black Hills about this town border station and, and kind of ramping up. Uh, the gas capability and capacity in southern Seward for a very long time, especially with our industrial years just coming to rail campus. There's some elements that they added in. They're kind of building a loop adjacent to the railroad, the main line. As it loops around Rummering, it kind of comes in as another additional feed, uh, just from the standard system that feeds the rail campus. And so that will kind of amp up this area even more, but, um, they acquired all that themselves. That has nothing to do with us, just like the town border station. But, um, yeah, no, this is a good, good opportunity for us. And like I said, my just, my reasoning was is I, we've seen it in the past with Pet Source, the throwdown area. That people can kind of put something securely, might be beneficial. So why waste it? Cause they'll just rip it all out and get rid of it.
Questions or comments from the council or are you entertaining a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is it for a discussion? Say no, do you wish to hear your votes? Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Cowell, Kayla Tanyas, Colton Miller, four to six here.
All right, item five, consideration of a resolution authorizing the signing of the annual certification of program compliance form for the Nebraska Board of Public Rose Classifications and Standards. Greg.
Uh, yeah, this basically states, we comply with the requirements and certifications, uh, of the state for our, uh, road classifications, so.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Not much to it.
Someone to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and it says it has resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Cowell, Kayla Tanyas, Colton Miller, four to six here.
All right, thank you. Item six, update on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Great. Well, I'm not going to book a Hawaiian adventure with a tsunami and then come back and book a declared emergency disaster in the city. All during budget season. So, we, um, kudos to Sydney's, uh, continuing to work in my absence. But, uh, I even told the mayor, I said, hey, last weekend, we're going to come in and I've got two days full of just budget, budget, budget. And then we sat with the lights out in the fire station for eighteen hours for two days straight. Um, and so we're just trying to gear up. So right now where we are, we have final numbers. Thank you to Maryland over at the assessor's office. Those were delivered a few days early. We started plugging in the assessments. We have approximately, I believe, about a five point two to five point five percent increase. In valuations in the city of Seward. Um, and so through the new legislation that was passed in the special session last summer, not this summer, we have different restrictions versus our lid levies. Um, and so there's a quantification we had to do until we had that final number. We couldn't really figure out. Where we were in regards to setting the levy or potentially most likely lowering the levy. If we exceeded, uh, it's basically the calculation was, I think, five point one seven percent. Plus what's called new growth. And we didn't get that new growth number until just yesterday when Maryland delivered that to our office. Uh, without those quantifications, we can't do the backwards math to then tell you, here's where we can be by the limit. Like there's no way to go over this without some, without some exceptions and all of the exceptions the legislature gave us are not really things that the city of Seward is looking for. Um, they're not things where we're kind of doing a lot of big one-offs. Even in, uh, some of our expenditures, like law enforcement and fire, get some expense, get some different exceptions. And we just don't see those exceptions as valuable because a lot of our stuff is long-term. We buy a new vehicle every year. We're looking at salaries and equipment that we utilize pretty on the reg and we try to, we've tried to be very cognizant of being careful and sliding those things in so our budgets are very flat. We don't do these big jumps, maybe in fire, cause we are starting to talk about some situations that took place with the ladder. But they're still kind of moving that along. But that is, that's a piece of equipment where we would look at the opportunity to kind of use that exception to s- to smooth out the budget. Knowing we wouldn't pay for that ladder again the next year. But we just don't see those foreseeable in our budgets. So a lot of the exceptions aren't there. Without those exceptions, we kind of have to do that backwards math to make sure we're staying under, uh, the restrictions of that. We did all that last night. We put together the final budget with the mayor this week. Uh, we'll review that and then next week you'll get the budget and then that big memo that I do. Uh, most of that's done. A lot of what we're seeing is, uh, liability insurance, the insurances that cover our buildings and structures and stuff. As you seen in last week, weather is becoming an issue. We're starting to see a lot of, of those property liabilities go up. And so I think we took a nineteen percent increase on that this year in some of those categories. Um, health insurance number just came in and Derek and I met with Jones Group the other day. So we had the health insurance number and we've pushed that through finally and passed that on. Uh, I think it'll be a five point two percent increase in health insurance across the board, both by the employee and the employer. I don't know, I'm pointing at Sergeant Frazee. Surprise, five point two percent on you, Frazee. Uh, and so just finishing some of those things up, we'll sit down with the mayor, then you'll get the memo and then we will have, I can tell you now, just by looking at the numbers. We will be at our front postcard meeting again this year. Um, but we will have three meetings, the postcard meeting as well. So we'll have four different opportunities for the public to come in and meet with us. To kind of fish that up. So be prepared and nimble. Obviously our two main meetings will set at some point that final meeting to adopt the budget after we have the postcard meeting. Cause we still think, correct mayor, it makes no sense to adopt a budget and then go sit and listen to the public. And not have any way to implement their feedback, uh, with constructive feedback. So we'll, we'll adopt the budget at a special meeting. I think we also have an extra week in September. Is that correct?
So we're, are we? Yep, second and sixteen next month and then you're right. Then after that's October seventh, so we have another week.
So we have an extra week also there, uh, but we, the Tuesday that's extra is also the Tuesday we would like adopt it and turn it in that morning. Yeah, so, um, the other one, it's, it's an unknown and I'm forewarning you now and it leads into our next discussion though. Is me and Derek have the quantification of the cost of this most recent disaster. Our estimated number, uh, and we'll talk about it kind of more in depth, but this is another item we're kind of going to have to like budget for. If some miraculous way we don't find out that there's a federal declaration that comes through before we adopt our budget in about forty days. Uh, and that is the cost of this disaster, which we estimate total cost. Now, these were costs for some of these laborers that are our guys where they would have been out working. You know, building the trail or putting up streetlights or, or working on electric systems. So some of, there's some savings in there. Um, but the total, grand total for the entire disaster is seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. That's a massive hit to our budgets if we have to absorb some of those expenses, especially in the electric budget. That's a mass, uh, electric had a huge amount for all the mutual aid that we had to call in to bring the system back online. So that's another one that's just going to have to be played out here and likely even with the bills that we have coming in. We may end up paying that out of a good portion of this budget here even. So not the best timing on that one. But so that is our timeline and like I said, we'll have our, most likely our, our public hearing, the official one will be on the sixteenth. Uh, and then, uh, the second will be just kind of that peripheral. We'll go through the highlights again, let the public come in and kind of talk about things, projects that they want to see. Uh, and then we'll do the public hearing, finalization, adoption of the one percent. And then if we hold it and don't approve it that night, the public hearing and then after the postcard meeting, we'll approve it at the public hearing. In the last week, that twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. And if need be, if we got to go again, we can do it on the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth. Just got to make sure we get it in by close of business on the thirtieth.
We did the eight AM meeting.
We did do the eight AM meeting.
Two years ago.
Breakfast pizza, right? That's how you, that's how you do this. Daryl, do you guys do breakfast pizza? Oh, nothing. County, I don't know if the county calls, if they have a special meeting, they call in some breakfast pizza for the commission.
We can afford that.
I, I, I buy, I'll buy. That's, that's on me, cause I'm probably the cause of that problem. But yeah, lesson learned on having disasters and Hawaiian vacations all in the same few weeks. Apologies.
Exciting Hawaiian vacations. Wasn't just like beach hanging out.
I wasn't sure that the tsunami just took that long to get to Seward. And it was just wind and rain and so I, I apologize. So that's our budget status. It's going to be a bit abbreviated, but again, we will have four opportunities still at a minimum for the public to come in and see what we're doing throughout the month. Uh, and we'll get that to you next week with the memo in draft format to start talking through things. I will just say things are tight just because we've seen some of these increases. Uh, the cost in supplies and these projects and everything just continues to go up and you all know that, so. Hard decisions will be made and we'll move our way through. Um, but yeah, do a good job on it. Anything else on that? Okay, we'll probably send out an email tomorrow, uh, or Thursday from Sydney to you guys. They'll have some pertinent times, dates and data. We'll also have, I think we have the date for the postcard hearing set by Sherry in the county. So we'll get that on there so you guys can.
Before we do that, can I get my email fixed?
Yes. Anything else on that?
None.
All right.
Item seven, update on the August ninth, twenty twenty-five storm event.
I'm going to start with a positive rather than negative. I can't commend enough our city staff, our electric department, our street department. Our public properties department, Tim, his department. Especially Tim. I mean, you talk about, uh, this is my fourth declared emergency. Uh, I don't know, did you declare any before I got here?
Probably.
Okay. Um.
We seem to collect them.
We do. This is the first time we've ever had two in one year. Um, and it was a doozy. I know we sent an email out to you and maybe we didn't keep up. But I think most of you noticed that we were utilizing Facebook. We continue to think, other than the code red system, and we did have that discussion. Uh, in our, uh, command meetings, whether we wanted to activate code red, but we felt like there was no immediate threat. Or safety, specific safety issue, and that's really what we want to utilize code red. If you go back to the times that we did, the first time was during the, what we call the water crisis during the eclipse. It was, don't drink the water. It has been contaminated, right, wrong or otherwise, and by state law, notification does, we need to let you know that. So that was the reason you used code, realized code red. The second one, um, was the flood. We recognized that we were seeing other levy systems across the state fail and put peoples in jeopardy. And so we quickly developed a plan and we activated that through the police department, through our volunteer fire department, our department heads. And informed people that were in that zone of the potential threat, even though we didn't see anything active, that there could be something. And how to a- activate that plan, self-report themselves and evacuate that area just so we didn't have to worry about them later. Uh, in the winter storm this year, we did not activate code red. There's no immediate threat to life or limb. Um, but we did put things out there that said, hey, if you are in a situation without power and you're stuck. Cause again, most people in this emergency could leave their houses and go out and about. That one, we did have that issue. There's significant enough snow, snowdrifts and things like that. But we still didn't feel like we were at life and limb at that point, cause cells were, phones were still charged and things like that. We worked it through. So we didn't activate the code red system. Um, but our crews, I can't say enough, and the, the volunteer fire department, uh, the police department out there. Uh, it looked like a war zone. If anybody went outside after about five forty-five on Saturday morning, it looked like the city fell apart. Um, Jared was the first person to contacted me. Um, we don't even know what went on with National Weather Service because there was no watch. Uh, I get emails the day before, days before from National Weather Service that informs me about severe weather, heat advisories, snowstorms, whatever, nothing. Uh, and then all of a sudden we get that ping on our phones that says, dangerous, severe thunderstorm warning. Just kind of a weird nomenclature. Yes, and it was, I think it was like twenty minutes in. So, um, Jared was the first one to report, cause obviously, uh, we took down power in the, I think almost the entire county except the western portion of it. Uh, and so Jared was the first one to report it and he said, he had to backtrack a whole bunch of different ways because of all the downed branches, trees, uh, debris everywhere. And it was still kind of blowing around. Um, and so he said, you need to get ready. Uh, so I went down and activated, tried to activate the emergency command center at, and there were some issues with that, trying to get that going at the, uh, E nine one one center. So I immediately pivoted, uh, checked that city hall was offline and as I was coming back around, recognized that the fire department was online. They do have their own generator. So I immediately went in there, chief Mifflin and assistant chief Brem were already on site. And I said, we're, we're going to make this our emergency command center, so let's go. And that's what we did. Uh, we started reporting pretty early in the morning to the mayor, uh, letting him know where we were, what was going on and then started all hands on deck. And just off and running for the full day. We kind of, once the light came up, we started getting assessment because the problem is until we turn on the NPBD substation. And then the follow, the subsequent substations, we can't tell what's off, cause everything's off. And until those systems start coming up, we can't really tell what level of damage we have. So most of the morning took us getting just that feed from the substation into town. Once we got that up, about mid-morning, about noon, that's when Jared recognized with his crew that we had definitely neutral aid. We reached out to Beatrice immediately. They sent us a crew immediately that day. Those guys came up and started doing assessments with us and they said, you're going to need a ton of people. Based on what we're seeing out in the field, looking at telephone poles, dangerous situations, ripped service lines, I mean, you name it. Um, and so we activated, uh, through an NPP, which is our mutual aid group. It's the Nebraska Municipal Power Pool. And we, um, I can't think rich enough, rich at Nebraska Municipal Power Pool, showed up the next morning, had already called in crews. We had guys in that night from Holdridge, Ord, Stewart, um, obviously we mentioned Beatrice. We later received guys from Grand Island, um, NPBD crews from Shadrum and Scotts Bluff. I mean, it was an army of, of people, uh, and we had to coordinate pretty quickly the resources, both hotel rooms, meals. Uh, because they were working basically, I think, from six AM until night, fall, till it was unsafe for them to work without light situations and stuff like that. So usually about eight o'clock. And so they did that all day Sunday, all day Monday, most of Tuesday, and then we started releasing crews to go home. So, uh, big, big efforts. A mass majority of people were very, very, um, understanding of that situation. In that meantime, we have the public properties crew, the street crew, the water crew, basically, uh, all day Saturday of the event. Was just keeping all of our infrastructure running. And so they were coordinating with the volunteer fire department to get diesel into town, because you can't pump it anywhere, so no power. So getting diesel into town and we were refilling, I think, a mass majority of the tanks at the hospital. I think they may have got it. I know the fire station did, the wastewater plant, the water plant, the water wells. I think we stopped by E nine one one and topped them off with our guys. Um, and so all of those critical pieces of infrastructure we kept running throughout the day because we just were unsure of what the real timetable was to get power back on. Uh, kudos to this village of Utica, with everybody being out of power except them, they agreed to be the sheltering location for that first day. Uh, and then that was subsequently followed up by E Free Church, um, to take that on and so thanks to them as well. All these things are going on. We were having command staff meetings every few hours at the fire station, bringing department heads back in, reporting on what we were seeing in the field. Trying to do damage assessments, um, and kind of relaying all that. So, uh, a great coordinated effort, um, by all. But a lot of just chasing around, like you wouldn't believe the amount of resources and like follow-up you have to do to coordinate fifty-plus, uh, linemen across the city. They also have no clue about anything in your city. You're just kind of saying, here's a map, here's a location, go there and go look at it and figure it out. Uh, usually we would try to have one of our guys with each crew, but sometimes it just, it didn't work out and we'd have to work on their own. But they did a great job. They were really incredible, uh, in the work they did. So we were very, very happy with that. So. As you can see, then we had to coordinate very quickly, where do we do with all the, cause we knew there was going to be a lot of debris. So where we did that, um, so obviously we had opened up the burn site and then we met as the command staff and started game planning for different locations and the viability of them. The one we were going to use in March was down by the old Metro Mail. That's all completely ripped up right now for, for some work that's going on there. So that wasn't an option. And so we came up with, uh, utilizing the fourplex and the parking lot there in the center aisle. Um, and then we also, the city for the most part was dumping everything we were picking up. So we would have kind of our own in and out down by the fairgrounds where we put snow. Uh, and we previously received burn permit down there. So we felt comfortable working with the volunteer fire department, that that was a safe place for us to do that. And then we could have a controlled burn of it later. So that's our debris plan that me and Derek have been working with NEMA to try and coordinate, uh, kind of what to do and how to document all of that. We were out there today sweating it, uh, measuring out mulch and debris and all kinds of other stuff. The subsequent one was also getting a, a grinding system. We were contacted by a few of them that were on their way to Lincoln and said, hey, we can stop in for a while if you have substantial debris. Cause they look like you get hit pretty hard. So we had one, the one that's at Star City Shores right now in Lincoln. They stopped here first, did our first round and then I believe on Monday, we'll have one from Bellwood, uh, Nebraska come down. And they'll grind up the rest of the stuff that's at the fourplex after the weekend. And then the fourplex will be closed down, uh, and then we'll move off the mulch, either give it away or find a new home for it. So we can utilize it as a sports parking lot next week. So lots of things, just tons of them. And, and every single person that walked into the fire station, whether it was a volunteer. Or like I said, Tim, the water crew, Bob Core, Chief Peters, Captain Hammond. Uh, Mayor Ike Meyer was there for a mass majority of the time we were there as well, uh, just lending a hand. Just, hey, what can I do? What, what do you need? Hey, we need you to go out, look at this situation. Okay, we're out. We're going to go take a look at that. I need you to go get me photos of this. I need you to, uh, go take a look at this tree. Is it a street tree and it's on a house? How can we safely get that off of that house? Uh, just kind of really doing that in real time. So, um, and we were also fed very, very nicely by the fire department. Cause we couldn't go anywhere. They were the only ones that could cook stuff. So, um, it was a, it was a good command experience. Uh, we will do a debrief, kind of a. We will do a debrief, kind of a post-mortem here in the next week or so, and get all those department heads and peripheral people that maybe were on the side, the county and things like that, come meet with us, E911, Sheriff Vance, and just try to talk about this event and some of the things that went right, and some of the things that went wrong. And just see what we can glean from it. We'll also have the safety committee take a look at it, just because of the nature of how much, we have a lot of debris, we have a lot of, we call them widowmakers, things are stuck up in trees and stuff like that. The widowmaker tree that's across the street from Zane's house, we literally watched them in his driveway bring that down. Kudos to, to Wit360 Tree Service, there was nobody that wanted to touch that thing, it was a major danger. And they did it, they actually did it, we thought we were gonna turn power back off to make that a safe workspace, and they were able to accommodate that actually, and bring it down safely themselves without interruption to the electric service, which is, that's a big deal. So, we really appreciated them partnering with us to get that down in such a timely manner, so. Again, looking through our, our kind of categories that we're gonna turn, that we turned in our initial assessment to the state on Wednesday last week, we have, we estimated our property damage at approximately $96,000. A majority of that is gonna be damages in the parks and the pool, if you didn't see the shades of the pool, got flown out of there. And then our cold storage building, basically, because no HVAC down at the Horseshoe, that we partnered with Jonathan. I like to say Jonathan's portion got crushed, but it's all of ours together. The framing inside of it just fell in, it, it looks like it sucked itself in and then vented itself out the roof. It, it's very odd, if you want to see it, kind of, how damaging that windstorm really was. But we estimate $96,000 in property damage, labor, $214,000 in labor, equipment, $317,000 predominantly, all of each person, almost, on those electric crews, either brought a digger, Derek, a bucket truck, or another piece of equipment on a trailer to work within blind alleys, and they can use these little tanks, almost, to pick up a whole pole with this tiny little vehicle, and drive it into somebody's backyard and have the strength to hold it and place it in place. And so a lot of that kind of stuff. Supplies, I mean, wire, transformers, transistors, all that stuff that goes up on all of those. And then additional services, this would be our hotels, our meals. Kudos to Paul, Ginny Coranda, and Billy down at Pack and Save. These guys just start showing up, and they're, I work at 6:00 in the morning, and almost no places are open to accommodate, you know, sixty-plus meals for volunteers. I walked in there just saying, hey, what can we do? I know we've done lunch here buffet style, and they were like, well, we can kind of buffet lunch and breakfast, and I said, that's not gonna work. I got them out working, and Billy was like, I'll make you breakfast burritos. And so, they made sixty breakfast burritos each morning for them, for crews that are out in the field. They would text us when they were half done, so we could start going out and distributing. And then me and Michelle St. Louis and some of the other crews, we would just drive around town and find all these crews and start feeding them in the morning, because they're already at work. They're going when the sun comes up. But thanks, kudos to Billy for coming up in a quick moment, and Paul and all of those guys. And then we served all our lunches out of Pack and Save, because it's right next to the electric department, and so all the crews came in on those, at those times on the weekends. So we had street, public properties, and all those other guys, water, they would all come through. And then, so that was a big service one as well. So that's kind of what makes up all that, again, our total, 751,558 is our estimate. Could be less, could be more, some of that is, you know, if we're using our electric utility rate guys, and applying those to guys from Ord, Holdridge, they probably take those guys less. We like our linemen, we like to pay them, but, so, we'll see where the ultimate number comes in. We have met the county standard for disaster declaration, and we've met the state standard now for this disaster, according to information that we got from NEMA and Gary Peterson, our emergency manager. So, the next logical step would be, is getting an emergency declaration, or disaster declaration from President Trump. That will be the key. If not, we're paying for this out of pocket.
I have a question. I know there was a big volunteer effort last weekend for limbs and all of that, and I also know that we still have a lot of limbs. How does, like, how do we?
We, we attempted the volunteer effort, we called all the churches, we let the volunteers know, we put it out on Facebook, we had a good, a good number.
I mean, it was a good showing.
There was a good showing, there was a good number of people up there, and I was up there for the first hour, and then I closed it down in the last hour as well, with our staff up there. I don't know if it's just, hey, I know the city's coming around, and they haven't been in my area yet, so I'll just leave it. One thing we are telling people, if they're worried about their grass, then they need to get rid of it on their own now, because there's no guarantee when we will get there. But Bob Myers and his crew, and then the water guys, when they're available, are helping drive dump trucks. They are moving quickly. I believe we have twelve districts that we designed, and he is through the first run, and I think the first seven now, approximately.
There's just a lot, I mean.
There is. And we, again, some of it's also probably because you've seen, like, for instance, Columbia and Highway 15, we just haven't gone to some of those areas, because we need flaggers and to be very careful so that high traffic. But you go to the heart of, because they started in the worst areas, and some of it they hit today on Seventh and Eighth Street, and they're very proficient. But the other thing is, we're not gonna come back and pick up your sticks and twigs and little tiny things, because you see everybody put them back in a pile, and we're like, nope, we're not coming back for that. So, but we will do another thorough run-through quickly at the end next week.
Well, they're doing such a great job, I mean, it's, it's so commendable. I just, I know that people are gonna ask at some point, like, what's the plan, and so I just wanted to kind of.
The ultimate thing, though, is at some point, we're gonna pull the ripcord and say, we're done, we went through the whole city, and now this is your responsibility, find somebody to help you, or volunteer, or neighbor, or friend, to move the rest of this, because you know what's gonna happen. We're gonna come down the street at the deadline, look through everything, and then, four hours later magically, something just appeared that wasn't there, and there's gonna be this dispute, so we're gonna just be pretty specific, because we have other things we need to move on to. We were right in the middle of the process of pouring that trail and finishing that project, and we probably would have had that done in a timely manner if it wasn't for that disaster, because we dedicated that whole week to finishing that. The same thing with putting up the rapidly flashing beacon that's supposed to go there for the crossing, painting the crossing. We didn't get to any of that, because we are inundated with work in those two departments.
The other question I had, because a lot of people I know seem to care about cemeteries. Or is there, I mean, I know we lost a substantial amount of limbs in the cemeteries, do we lose a lot of whole trees?
Yes. Greenwood Cemetery got, I described it as, it looks like, when it happened, it looked like a bomb went off. It looked like a bomb just blew the place up, and so there is a number of trees in Greenwood. And the other thing we have to remind people at the cemetery, and it's in their agreements, and it's in the, it's in the rules and regulations of it, is any damage due to something like that is the responsibility of the owner of the plot.
Oh, you mean to like the?
To headstones and things like that. We'll do our best, we think a mass majority of them just laid down, because they're heavy, but they will go over, and we'll work with the cemetery crews and the different funeral homes in town, in the stone centers, to try and get those uprighted and back up, when it's safe and appropriate to do so. But if there's any damages, nicks, scratches, or anything like that, that's ultimately the responsibility of the family of the deceased or the owners of those plots.
I guess the, the question I've been getting is, and I actually messaged Jonathan about it, is that a lot of people are asking, like, what's the plan to replace all these trees?
That's a whole nother thing for the tree board, and the biggest one is, probably getting the ones we have in there out, and then planting new ones in an appropriate location, in a diversity that's appropriate, so that we don't, I think the biggest, say, Mike can speak to this, because he works a lot with the tree board. I think what we're seeing is a combination of extreme weather and an aging canopy that's all about approximately the same age.
Right, right.
And so you're seeing, we're seeing this issue, like, with the burrows, across the park systems, across the state, they're all going at the same time because of disease and fungus and all kinds of other things, and that goes rampant. Here, we're seeing age, we have Emerald Ashmore in Seward County now, and so those are going out. We tend to find that our, what are our ones that tend to flip over, because they have really shallow roots? The hackberries. And so, if you notice in this storm, because it's an extremely violent storm, you notice that we had a lot of uprooting. Just take a look at that tree up at St. John's, that's a massive tree, that thing flipped itself into overhead. And so, a lot of these shallow roots, trees also are gonna take a pounding. And so, slowly but sure, we have the relief program, we have extra money in there for both Emerald Ashmore replacement, so we just note, we have Emerald Ashmore, so we want to replace, so we put more money in there, and then we also are utilizing it, certain instances, for all the replacements on the highway. And so we have a program specifically created by the tree board, working with Mike, to give special incentives to those that lived along Highway 15, to have a tree removed in that project, to get a pretty high-quality tree, pretty mature, at a very good price, and we've selected already a diversity of trees that are available.
Well, I mean, I know you have the program, I guess the question I have is, are people, are we seeing any utilization of the program? How do, like, that's where my head is, it's like, how do you?
Me and Derek talk about this a lot, because we're concerned, we're concerned that people are so overcome by the maintenance of them at the moment.
Like the paralyzation of like?
And so they're like, I don't want a tree, because I don't want to deal with that again. It's like, well, the little tree's not gonna create that problem, but it's gonna be a benefit down the line. It's a lot of educating, it's a lot of the work we do during Arbor Day, and around that time, you can lead a horse to water, but I think when they stand out there and rake those weeds all day during fall, and then their neighbors' trees blow the weeds in again, I think some people just get kind of, and that's hard, because there's the incredible benefit of trees, like, we can't speak to it enough in regards to what it does to produce oxygen, to create cooled street systems, and cool our homes, and reduce energy usage, biodiversity, there's just a whole litany of reasons that having a diverse canopy and replanting, because the other thing is, if we don't get to replanting, you're gonna have a whole long time. But go out and look at our new neighborhoods, there's just not a whole lot of tree planting going on, and some of these neighborhoods are twenty years old. If you had a twenty-year-old neighborhood, you'd have some pretty large trees already, and there's none, so.
On a positive note, I wanted to share that, oh, I saw lots of examples where neighbors helping neighbors, clearing streets in addition to all the fine work our staff was doing. We had lots of people volunteering their own vehicles, and trailers, and chainsaws, and whatever it took to clear streets in Seward, and I think that that was also a huge push in helping us to get where we are today. I mean, a lot of those brush piles that were on the side of the street, they're, they're becoming a lot more sparse now, which is good, and a lot of those are neighbors helping too. You know, we, we appreciate that. The city of Seward appreciates the opportunity for citizens to have the means to help out their neighbors, especially those that aren't able to do it themselves. So, it's a big part. I'm also liaison at the tree board, and if you have suggestions on things that you'd like to see us do as a tree board, we'd be glad to, to listen. We'll publish when our meetings are, and just come in and visit, and we'll get that going. Thank you.
Yep. That's all I have, like I said, we already talked kind of in that briefing on the budget, we're gonna monitor this situation, but we may have to pivot quickly to make sure that we can appropriately cover the cost of some of this emergency work, so. I will keep you informed as I'm informed.
See you, Ben, here's your report.
There was an emergency, there was stuff, had a budget, and I think everybody else is not gonna answer questions, again, those are, other than getting interviewed by Lori about my tsunami extravaganza, it was pretty much emergency, 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 budget, 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 and a few minor things in between. So, that's what I had going on. I can answer any questions that you guys had, but anything else that's kind of happening.
And as Greg mentioned, we awarded away the President's designation of emergency. We did have Congressman Flood come and visit, and I could show him around the community and what the damage was, because it's important that he under, that he sees and understands what's going on and what the effects were, so that if there is a concern later, that maybe this doesn't get recognized and approved by the President, that he has the ability then to, to give firsthand account of what he saw and why it's important to declare it as an emergency, so. I feel, I'm very appreciative of Congressman Flood taking the time out of his schedule to come to Seward and, and see, see the command center and, and the aftermath of the, of the storm.
I have one other one, and it's kind of related to Tim, because it's an important one to the community, somebody asked me randomly from Bellwood today, and I was talking to them about. Chapters bookstore, we did have a structural engineer, or they did have a structural engineer come out, received, I would call a positive report, that can be repaired. They'll need a proper mason, bricklayer that can kind of put that back together correctly, reestablish the parapet wall, but it can be, there's no, they didn't give it the negative thumbs down of this isn't gonna work anymore, so that's really, really key to our historic downtown, a very historic building, and a, a wonderful business that a lot of people were very worried about. Again, that's another opportunity of businesses helping businesses, neighbors helping neighbors, to get chapters moved out of there due to a safety issue with that building and its structural situation, until it can be analyzed, getting them into another space to keep their retail going, and hopefully we'll get that building put, put back together and get chapters back to its home, but in the meantime, go, go hang out and check out them as well, so. That was a really big one, and that just happened last couple days as well, but we got some of that good news.
Any questions, comments, or prayers, or was there a motion to accept the report?
Move to accept the report.
We will motion in a second, please press your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cowell, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Miller, we're at six zero.
Thank you. Do you have any future requests for council items or mandatory action? Seeing none, Jonathan, what do we have going on?
Sneaky mayor. Tomorrow, on the twentieth, two o'clock, ribbon cutting for DC Door Company at the Civic Center, four o'clock, we have groundbreaking ceremony for Parker Baby Company, who's a new business in the rail campus, we'd welcome you all to join us for that. Four thirty, literally next door, Plum Creek Seed Services, another rail campus business is celebrating their, their grand opening with a ribbon cutting, and so we'd welcome you all to join us tomorrow afternoon for those. Friday, August 29th, we have our, one of our annual professional development luncheons, we're gonna be focusing on search engine optimization as the topic. We've asked a lot of our local small businesses, what do they need support with, and marketing is one of those top items. Search engine optimization is a nerdy way of saying getting on the top of Google, Google search. And we have Dylan Frederick with Rush Light Agency joining us for that. Wednesday, September 10th, Business After Hours, Spare Time Lounge and Grill, starting at four. The next Wednesday after that, September 17th, will be our next ambassador's call. One of those items, or one of those celebrations will be the Newtown Water Station with Black Hills Energy, as they're expanding their natural gas connection to the city, we're grateful for their investment to, to help us, especially on the south side of town, with our growth there. Thursday, September 25th, will be our Progressive Dinner in historic downtown Seward, so kind of an extension of our Farm to Table event, but it's gonna be in downtown, and we're connecting that with our Connecting Young Nebraskans Summit, where we're inviting 150 to 200 young professionals from all over the state of Nebraska for the next day, when we have our, our Connecting Young Nebraskans Summit, which will be at the Seward Civic Center. We're excited to show off that newly renovated space, and, and really to showcase Seward with people from, from all over Nebraska. So we welcome you to join us for that Progressive Dinner on Thursday, at a number of downtown restaurants, and then also on that Friday for the summit, for those that identify as young professionals, we'd love to have you. With that, that's all I have, thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Jonathan. Next, we have a strategy session.
I move the city council going to closed session with the mayor, the city legislature, the city president, the city attorney, for the protection of the public interest, and to discuss conflict negotiations with MPD for wholesale of the power purchase, and provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance, per se, and not to exceed thirty minutes. Oh. Sorry, they're at order. Add Jonathan to that, and the topic will be real estate interest to the Seward Rail Campus, also thirty minutes.
The motions are second. Please press your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cowell, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Miller, we're at six zero.
All right, the council, we voted to go into closed session at 8:43 PM for the protection of the public interest and discuss real estate interest at the Seward Rail Campus, to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance, no formal action will be taken. We are now in closed session.